If we can call a roll call to establish form, please.
Trey Zeller?
Here.
Terry McLuhan?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
James Tevito?
Here.
Mickey Snyder?
Here.
Josh Thomas?
Here.
All right, we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions? Yes ma'am.
We'd like to add just a brief discussion to the agenda in regards to keeping our city site on the TV thingy updated.
On the line? Okay.
You've got to verbally.
Oh, you want a second? Okay. Well, all right, anything else? All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, get a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Any additions, corrections? If not, all those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
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 All right. Well, this brings us to our annual State of the City address that I get the privilege of doing. I'll try not to bore you too much, and it's more for the, a lot for the public and for the council, too. This is something that's required by every mayor, is supposed to do within the first 90 days of the year. And it's always been, this is, as you well know, being born and raised in Eureka and being on the city council, you know, for four, five terms. I've sat through this, but sitting in this chair gives me a different perspective on things. But one of the nice things that we did have when I came into as mayor for city council, was I found Eureka and the surrounding community gathering together for an unusual event, and they all cooperated, and it was the celebration of the SWEPCO and us getting SWEPCO defeated, I guess, on the clear cuts. And it was, it was nice to be able to see our community to get together and rally around in a positive manner, something to, to work towards. But although, and y'all remember too, within the first 30 days, the infrastructure came crumbling down on us. All of a sudden, I don't remember if it was the first two weeks or three weeks, we were notified that we had a drainage ditch by the parking lot of the auditorium. The tunnel finally caved in and fell. And after scurrying around and talking to the state and the county and everything, we did find and received a $140,000 matching grant. And again, we were working with the county judge and the county and the state and repaired the, the big hole in the ground, which became almost a tourist site for a while. But it was something that we were able to again, get together with, with the city and the county and the council to, to get something immediately. And of course, that continued on because we did find out at that point in time that we're eligible for the CDBG money, the Community Development Block Grant. And so we immediately also applied for continuation of tunnel repair. And we'd received a $200,000 grant to work on the Flint Steel, Flint Steel System down on Main Street. So that's been exciting because this opens up a whole new area for grants for us and for the infrastructure that this administration and on that council, I think, really is working toward and trying to resolve. And again, within 60 days of the administration, the council introduced an ordinance, and we got ordinance 2223 passed. And then, within 60 days, again, we got the whole community, once again, got together in a positive manner and was able to pass the ordinance by 71 percent vote, which is, you know, a pretty nice awareness for Eureka Springs and to be aware that, of how important that we need to be in welcoming everybody into Eureka Springs. And out of that, and the other positive aspect of it, was we got over 42 million hits when we were on the Daily Show, and one of our council members, Mrs. Zeller, was on the council show, or on the Daily Show and represented the city very well on there. So, you know, again, the, and that work that the community put forth on 2223 is now put into a documentary that's being filmed up at Sundance Film Festival this week, and hoping to see what will happen up there. So Eureka Springs, because of those hits, I think, on the website, we were also named the 2015 East City by Google. And the East City Awards recognize the strongest online business community in each state. And so this little town of 2,000 people received once again a national award that I think we can all be proud of. Of course, when we first came into council, I was beginning to wonder if, whether anybody liked me or not, because all of a sudden I had the fire chief, police chief quit, and we had to reappoint new staff members for that. And then I had the city administrator, assistant administrator, who'd been through four mayors, resigned, got married, and moved to Colorado. But I think overall, we've been real good, and I've been real blessed to be able to get some new positions in there. Our police chief has done a wonderful job coming in, Thomas Acord, took right over, been a member of the police department for numerous years and been raised in the city, understood the city and the importance of the value of the tourism and, and how it relates to the police department. And then our police, our fire chief, had been a fire chief in a small town in Kansas that dealt with volunteers, fire department and paid volunteers. So I think we were real blessed to be able to get him. And then I think I was real lucky, too, to be able to get Kim Striker as a new administrative assistant to come in. Some of the department overviews, we had, in city, in the transit department, once again, Eureka Springs should be proud that we're the only transit that I'm aware of in the city, in the state of Arkansas that is self-sufficient. In other words, the city council doesn't have to pay for the city transit. All the other transit departments in the state have to be supplemented by the city council on their budgets. And we've got a transit department that is able to pay for itself. They gave over 115,000 rides with over 160,000 miles driven, had 11,000 hours. They generated in fares $209,000, almost $210,000 last year. They had revenues on the tram tours, they had 7,100 tram tours riders that generated revenue of another $117,000. And then the parking lots that they had parked, at the two parking lots, had over 5,000 cars that generated an additional $26,000. So the transit in itself then received approximately $663,000 from the federal government. So they came out and did a great year, their, their year was up this year over the last year in ridership. So they've done a, we felt a good job. And as I mentioned, Thomas Acord is the new police chief, this is, has completed his first year. And Thomas went ahead and continued to be proactive in promoting community school functions and putting police out at the schools and helping with security out there. And he's also participated in the county advocacy against domestic violence program. And they've been also improved the efficiency through the technology and reporting and data shared with secure email rather than hard copy. So over the years, past year, they had over 1,700 calls for service with 765 offense incident reports taken. They had 22 reports of domestic disturbances resulting in 15 arrests or warrants issued. There was 983 citations issued and 1,000 warning citations with 292 arrests and 80 warrants served and 187 noise violations. For those out there thinking that we're not doing a lot of police work. In the fire department, Chief Randy Aches has completed his first year. And with the fire department, with our seven stations and over 50 full-time and part-time volunteer personnel, went on over 243 fire calls. They had 100, or 1,012, 1,292 EMS with total emergency patient calls. The fire department was awarded a FEMA grant, and we received $750,000 to buy a new ladder truck, 107-foot ladder, which is also on a single axis. So it will be allowed to traverse Eureka Springs streets and, and get around all of our corners and up our hills without a problem, help service the people again. So we've done a, Chief Aches has done a good job in providing with our fire service and our EMS. In public works, our weather was again, the main driving force in shaping public works. We had over 70 inches of rain this year during the year, which is about 175 percent of our yearly average. And of course, we're real lucky when we had our hole for doing the parking lot, we had one of our floods came through. And the public works were, were real efficient in being able to put sandbags around and prevent any major flooding going through. So we're real lucky in having, not having a lot of flooding damage go through there. But that does create problems with our wastewater treatment facility and the collections, because a lot of that water goes down into the public works area. Right now, we've got a lot of work going on with, with the public works. We're still on the radar of the people down the, in Little Rock, and they're watching us real carefully. But we're trying to make progress on our sewer system. And I think we're going in that direction, but it's going to take a lot more energy and money putting into the, to the sewer system and the plan itself to be able to really satisfy everything that we need. And also, a lot of our lines that need to be replaced are going to have to be addressed this coming year. But our meter replacement project is about 66 percent complete. The council voted over $300,000 last year to buy our new water meters. And we have those in, like I said, about 66 percent. And we're anticipating, you know, up to maybe a three-year payback on that investment. And it depends on, you know, of course, the actual billing for the water, depending on our accuracy of the meters. And we're hoping that we'll have, from what we're seeing, a lot better accuracy on those meters. We've had a lot of work done on Mill Hollow with streetworks, with several non-paved streets. A lot of the focus was on repairing some of the worst part of our asphalt and concrete and solving some of the drainage issues that we've had. One of our biggest issues is being able to continue to build the department by upgrading the fleet and the facilities to meet the carbon reduction goals and to maintain the mission of providing customers with a high-quality, efficient, reliable water and wastewater and street service in a manner that they, they value in the environment and community interest. We're in the process now of working with McClellan engineers to upgrade our, what they call the PLC, which is a programmable logic control at our public, at our wastewater plant, in the computer system down there. And so we're also being contracted to begin inspecting the sewer mains and beginning downtown with larger truck lines and working out to identify the basins with larger inflow and infiltration as the funding allows. And in 2016, we'll, we'll continue to increase our water testing capabilities and the frequencies of these tests, including several substances to our testing list, which includes the fluoride, of course. In the building department, we've received over, we had over 275 permits were issued and generated over $21,000 in building permit revenues. The CAPC enjoyed a good year, they had a 7.1 increase in their tax collection, which is almost identical to what we received in our sales tax. So pretty much parallels with each other. The CAPC, as, as most knows, advertising markets to a lot of different regional communities all within four to six hour drive of Eureka Springs, you know, including Dallas, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Kansas City, St. Louis, Wichita, Overland Park, and those areas. But also because of the significance of Highway 49 with the Fayetteville-Bentonville Northwest Corridor, we're setting up a lot of advertising and collaborative advertising over there. We're working closely with Bentonville and Fayetteville and Eureka Springs and also Branson in trying to work together and create a stronger market and working to generate more business for Eureka Springs. We've also had, I think, a lot of the shift in marketing from the CAPC is going from print to the digital, which I think, according to, you know, the 7 percent increase from last year, it looks like that's a good way to go to it. In the parks department, you know, we're well, we have over 18, as most people know, we have over 1,800 acres of land and over 28 miles of trails in the parks. We had over $110,000 in capital improvements last year to the parks. And that includes the Lake Leatherwood area and also the restoration of the Harmon Park log cabin, which is the parks headquarters. We received a grant down there to restore the log, logs and do a lot of the work. We added an additional park at Pocket Park down at Gad Spring with benches that were donated by Mountain Eclectic. Had steps replaced down in Basin Park that were needed to be replaced up there. And then, of course, as I mentioned, we had a lot of trail work going through there. The Parks completed their first in-town ADA accessible trails in November that was funded by a $40,000 grant by the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Area. In April, we also opened up a single track loop bicycle trail that roughly parallels a Harmon Park Trail Extension on the east side of Polk Street. And then the Parks Committee raised almost $1,600 this year to implement the Trail Master Plan. So, and along with those same lines, the City Parks was awarded a Transportation Alternative Program Grant from the Arkansas Highway Department in the amount of $63,000 to add a paved trail going from Harmon Park to Clear Springs School. So we're going to be able to have some easements there for the kids to walk on and create a little bit safer area. In July, the Dog Park celebrated its first anniversary. And then, of course, out in Lake Leatherwood, they generated almost $74,000 in receipts, which was more income this year than in previous years, which enabled the parks to address the maintenance and repairs that they need out there even more so than they've had anticipated. The Parks is working to develop a lake management plan for Lake Leatherwood and contracting with the University of Arkansas to gather the data. And of course, I think we all remember around Christmas time, before Christmas, the city council allocated $34,000 to the parks to help us celebrate Christmas and to buy and put up new Christmas decorations and also try to put all of our decorations in one location. We've had them located in about five to seven or eight different spots, and so now we've got them in one location where we all know where they are. We have one department that's going to be coordinating our Christmas. And the good news is that we still, the Parks did such a good job, they really only spent a little over $20,000 of that $34,000. So we've got some money left over next year to continue to buy some additional replacement for bulbs and equipment as we need to be. So the, in summary, you know, what we've done, like I said, it's been an interesting year for me, coming from the city council to the mayor. But we have a lot of intermediate and longer range plans that have become clear to me. Part of that is the economic development, because I firmly believe, and I think I've talked to the city council earlier, and one of the reasons we've developed the mayor's task force on economic development is to get some diversification in our economy. We can't just depend on 100 percent of tourism, we need to find some other business models to come into town to help us supplement our sales tax, because that's what we basically live on. And so, you know, we've established the mayor's task force, and then we've also working with the C3, which is a collaborative effort, again. We're trying something unique, and that's working with other people, working with Berryville and Green Forest and to develop a, again, an economic development plan, and working with the school system to come up, to see if we can come up with some alternative systems for magnet schools that the schools, our city schools can all participate in. And we're hoping that's going to develop into another economic development deal. But one of our main problems is, of course, our infrastructure. You know, I guess the good news, bad news is that, you know, we've got a lot of work to do. I'm going to be giving the city council a five to 10-year plan here shortly that's going to outline, you know, several million dollars worth of work that needs to be done in the next 10, 15 years. We're not going to be able to do that by ourselves, but the good news is that because we now are eligible for some CDBG money, we're going to have some assistance on that. But that still doesn't mean that we're just going to be free money, because we're still going to have to participate in some method with that. And a lot of that's going to probably be a matching of some form. Our next work that I have talked to with the Economic Development, Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District, is Black Bass Dam Lake, or Bass, Black Bass Dam Repair. Two weeks ago, I had Congressman Womack's office over here in conjunction with the Economic Development people out of Harrison. And we took them down to show them the condition of the dam. You know, it's just getting worse, but we are getting, I've tried to, I think by having them and see the condition of the dam, I think we got a higher priority on, on being able to get some monies for that. The other thing that we're continuing working on is, of course, finishing up the water meter replacement. And also this year, we're going to be able to go ahead and get our public works building done. We're probably be able to put that out for bids, I would say probably within the next four weeks, six weeks, and get that started by springtime. So our public works will have a new building to work in. But a lot of this is also going back into our infrastructure. What I'm trying to, we have to do in order to continue living in Eureka Springs with the quality of life we have come used to, we're going to have to find a method to improve our infrastructure, and that's our water and sewer lines. And what I've got proposed is trying to do some work, and again, it just depends on, it's on money. It's, you know, if we can figure out a solution to how we want to do this, my priorities is trying to extend some water and sewer lines out and getting that started. If we put water and sewer lines out to the east and like we should have done a long time ago, will I be able to develop, again, building areas for people to come in and build and have new businesses and new retail and new businesses coming in, which will mean more sales tax, which again, will help Eureka Springs. But the other part that we're trying to do in conjunction with that, and I'm going to put a challenge to the planning commission, is to being able to work with a master plan and seeing where we do want to go with our water and sewer and make sure that where we're putting the water and sewer is a place that we want to try to be able to develop. And also, the places that have already been developed that do not have water and sewer. We still have places in Eureka that are still lacking that. And of course, that's my, one of my priorities in through there. But I think the current thing is trying to keep a focused fiscal management system in your, in place. It's not possible to keep on sustaining our current level of cash flow without coming up with some form of additional money. We've been borrowing from Peter to pay Paul for so long, we're going to have to stop doing that. Our department heads have been real good this year in cutting the budget. We've cut it down as slim as we can do it without cutting personnel. But we're going to have to figure out another method of, you know, continuing funding these water and sewer plants, water and sewer lines, because if we don't, ADQ will come in and tell us we're going to. And I'd rather do it on our design rather than having somebody else come in and tell us what to do. We're going to be a lot better off in that condition. So, you know, our expenditures, like I said, have been cut to the minimum. Again, I'm going to be presenting to the council some additional revenue sources. It's not going to be a lot, some fees that are going to be raised, but it's, again, it's a start. And also, as we talked about, we're going to have to look at other alternatives in through there. So in the end, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity for this last year. The council, I think we've had a good year, I think we've all worked together in trying to come up with the solutions. We all know what the problems are, and I commend the council of being able to work together with the mayor to be able to come up with the solutions. So thank you very much. And that concludes this day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, with that said, we do have some commission vacancies. We have one new hospital vacancy that just came up. So if there's anybody out in TV land that's listening, is interested in hospital work, please contact City Hall and put in an application to be on the commission. And we also have one position vacant on the parks and two physicians vacant, no, one position, let me rephrase it, two positions vacant on the cemetery commission. So we really need people to come in and step up to, and help out on these. These are important commissions, and, you know, they don't take a lot of time, but they do take some citizen involvement. So, other than that, we have public comments? None? All right. All right, get a motion to discuss ordinance 2235?
Second.
Mr. McLuhan?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to place, let's see, ordinance number, to suspend the rules, place ordinance number 2235, up for a cert reading by title only.
Second.
In discussion? Roll call?
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Mr. Zeller?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2235, an ordinance designating Eureka Springs Police Department as the official responsible for the collection of fines assessed in district court for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Mr. McClung?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 22, 2235 on its third and final read.
Second.
Any discussion? Get a roll call?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
All right, so moved. Our next order under new business is rezoning of 120 South Main from R1 to C1.
Move to discuss?
Second.
Mr. McClung?
Mr. Mayor, back early, I think it was in the, under the previous mayor, that we, across the street from there, across Main Street, we had to change it as it was zoned residential across the street. And I think at that time, we found that what I'm going to call the east side of the street there, where this property is located, is already commercial.
It was made commercial because I can remember asking about what would happen to Hazel's house, and I was told emphatically it would make it commercial and therefore worth more money.
David?
We discussed making it all commercial, and then some, um, planning called me today and said, it turned out that the reason Glenna wasn't able to finish that and bring it all back to planning was that there was a lot of property owners, they couldn't find to deal with this going to commercial and so, and just in one fell swoop, and this property was residential. When the people bought it, they realized it was, and they, and so they're applying for commercial, which in the past, in that prior council that we had discussed, could be commercial, but it turned out that that house was residential.
Which house are we talking about?
George?
Well, is that, is that one house just the only one that's residential? Because that whole side of the street seems to have commercial activity in just about every building there.
I believe it's that one house and the lots to this.
Well, then, so what we have kind of is like spot zoning that's residential there, and we should just convert, we would, would we be making the whole block commercial then if we just rezoned this one part? Or, Anne, you have, okay, I'll shut up and let Anne talk.
Okay.
Well, by having observed the process and watching the planning commission meetings and also these meetings, it was decided to do it on a case-by-case basis because of the ownership problems primarily on the west side of the street. And so, you'll definitely have more, I'd be happy to pass this around, I don't have a color printer, so this shows you that, as you come down Plainer Hill, there was a little white house with a brick garage, and the mountain was coming down into the property. They took the garage down, they built that beautiful stone wall, and so everything in that long narrow triangle is what is on the request for rezoning this evening.
Okay.
And it will link to C1 property, C1 zones.
Mm-hmm.
I'll leave this back, but you're welcome.
Okay, coming down Plainer Hill, so that one little house on the right.
Correct.
Okay.
And all that property within that long narrow triangle?
That's Hazel's house.
It was, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about rezoning now?
Yes, and there's a map on your, on the next page, so you can see.
Okay, I was thinking of the other house on Main Street that was being rehapped.
See, and I could have sworn we had already, Hazel's house was the one that did go through.
No, no, it was property on the other side.
I think it was the, the total plan on the other side.
The process for approving this to C1 is just by vote of council, or do we need a resolution? An ordinance?
I think it's by ordinance, isn't it, Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
I would make a motion then to have the city attorney prepare an ordinance reflecting, converting the mentioned properties on the east side of Main Street from R1 to C1.
I'll second that.
Mr. McClung?
That's fine, but I think in the meantime, while that's being done, someone needs to go back and look at the old videos or something because I think it's, I think it's done.
We did.
You already did? From several years ago when we, when we did all that?
When the Brammer Brothers property was, yes.
That's true.
That was the only segment at that time that was zoned commercial.
That's sure not how I recall it, but that may be the way it came down. That's not the way I remember.
I'd be happy to get the videos for you if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
Any further discussion? Got a motion and a second to have an ordinance drawn up to change this from R1 to C1. All those in favor, sing for opposite, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. All right, second ordinance from the planning commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You get a motion to, to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
I think I will have Mr. Beecham come up and probably explain this ordinance. I know we've gone through this round and round, so.
Yes, we have. My name is Steve Beecham, I'm with the planning commission. We have been dealing with some confusion in the code book over home occupations and what that entails and the definition of it, and this has gone on for several years. And in looking through the code book and also working with the city clerk, we really found there were some, some parts of code that were very confusing and vague. And so, this ordinance basically clarifies home occupations and makes home occupations by right that don't involve the coming and going of the public in all residential areas. And any home occupation that involves the coming and the going of the public would require CUP in, only in the residential areas. That's the only place that this would apply. And the other change, I think, in that ordinance is that home occupation under Section 7, a business license shall be required for all new home occupations that involve access by the general public. And our thought there is coming and going of the general public is like a hair salon or a massage where you have parking and a sign out in front. And we felt like in order to protect the quality of a residential neighborhood in much the same way that we do with B&amp;Bs and things, that a CUP would give neighbors to have some input on their neighborhood. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about this, but it's, it's.
Yeah, does this, are you talking here about contracting businesses that are run out of a home by the owner and includes his trucks and things that he owns?
No.
Or you're talking about?
That's the next one, we're not doing this one.
We're strictly in this, in this ordinance.
No, wait, I have two of them here that we have.
Yeah, we have three pages, one is one.
There are two ordinances tonight.
Oh, I thought, oh, I thought this one.
That's next.
I superseded this one because there was something in this one that we didn't want to, okay. Then we're just talking about anything that looks like it belongs to a contracting business not being able to be parked in view of the residents on the street? What I'm getting at is, does this apply, this doesn't apply to people who work for a contractor and drive their truck home or, and park it in the driveway?
I think you may be confusing the two ordinances. The ordinance we're discussing currently is just home occupations.
Yeah, okay.
Home occupations is where someone is working from their, from their home.
Or the three-page.
All right.
It's the three-page, just the longer.
Okay. Until the single.
Okay, okay. But neither one of them applies to what I'm talking about, okay.
Well, actually, one will.
Oh, are they? Okay.
So, they were thinking, you're talking about new business number three.
Okay, okay. I had only seen the, so we're talking about item number three then on the.
The documents that you have, if you look, Steve was talking about the one that says new business number three.
Mm-hmm, okay.
With the home occupations.
I'm sorry for any confusion I had. I hadn't seen the, the agenda I saw was a little different.
Steve?
Yes.
A compliment to the planning commission for taking on an area of potential abilities to, for, for citizens to have an occupation and make a living in this town and to be accepted into it in a manner that doesn't destroy the integrity of a residential area but still allow somebody to have a home business like a bookkeeper or a seamstress or things like that. And there's obviously a lot more than that. And, and cleaning up the code so as to, again, to allow those people to seek some type of home business in a reasonable contained manner. I think it's really appropriate.
Well, okay, then I have a further question. Okay, I have a resident in my district that I represent. She has a yoga business.
Right.
And she has parking in front of her house where her clients park there. Is this giving her a problem, this ordinance?
She, does she live in the business? Does the business?
She lives in the building, yeah.
Does the business take up more than, I think, a third of the living space? I mean, is it considered a home occupation?
I have no idea. Her yoga studio is in the house, but I've never been inside.
Is the studio a separate, is it separate from the home?
It's not detached. It's, I don't know what her layout is, but since it's all one structure, I assume the studio's in the basement or something. I don't know. I've never investigated it because I wasn't aware that this would involve, I mean, it's a quiet business, and I don't know what, I'm zoned out there, I assume it's residential. This is on Frontage Road out there by Deer Lane, behind the nursing home, behind.
I think they're commercial.
Is that commercial back in there?
Yeah, I do, I do.
That's not a residential, that's actually.
I think those lots are commercial.
I think I do.
Okay, because they are residential lots. I mean, they have.
They are, they are back down the street, but those on the, on the end there were commercial.
Oh, okay, on that end, because I think they, the rest of the street must, is all residential.
Where out at the two duplexes.
Yeah, mhm. That, that part is commercial.
Same with the apartments across where you live.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Our only focus here was residential, and basically it's to sort of help protect residential areas, but it's also to kind of bring the code up to acknowledge that there are people that are doing computer services, medical transcriptions, things that you can't tell that they have a business going in their home, and it's really fine.
Yeah, I ride out of my house.
But it's just fine, but if, but if someone in your neighborhood wants to start a business and have the coming and the going of the public, our concept was that the residents that live in that neighborhood should have some say-so, and that's basically what the CUP is about.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure this didn't apply to her because she'd be blindsided by it, because I know she doesn't know that we're discussing this.
Well, I also think this is basically just for anything new, not anything that is already in existence.
Looking out for my people.
Mr. Beecham? You're, you're to be applauded for that.
If, if that same scenario, say it's, you know, some, one of our streets somewhere in town here had a yoga studio, they would have to apply for a CUP?
Yes, only if they start a yoga studio.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. But what we have, in approaching this, we talked to the building inspector as well as the city clerk. We think they're on the front lines of dealing with the licensing and determining where this is going to go. It's not really the planning commission that steps in and says, well, you have to have a home occupation license. And so, we're leaving that part of the determination to the people that actually issue the licenses.
Okay.
But it really only applies to something new. It's, it has nothing to do with anything that's currently in existence.
Okay.
James?
Well, then I'll move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, sing for opposite, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The ordinance number will be 2236. An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to clarify home occupation business locations. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs desires to better codify its regulation of the location of home occupation businesses within the city, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, that subsection 14 of the municipal code be amended as follows. Section 1, subsection 14.08.01, District R1 Victorian Residential, paragraph B shall be amended to read as follows. B, permitted uses. Following is a list of uses in R1 Victorian Residential District permitted by right. Dwelling, single-family, dwelling, two-family, public use, home occupation requiring no coming and going of the general public and no overnight street parking of construction trailers or other business-related vehicles, including but not limited to mowers, mixers, and dirt removal equipment. Section 2, subsection 14.08.01, District R1 Victorian Residential, paragraph C2, conditional uses shall be amended by adding the following. Home occupation involving access by the general public. Section 3, subsection 14.08.101, District R2 Contemporary Residential, paragraph B shall be amended to read as follows. Permitted uses. Following is a list of uses in R2 Contemporary Residential District permitted by right. Dwelling, single-family, dwelling, two-family, public use, home occupation requiring no coming and going of the general public, no overnight street parking of construction trailers or other business-related vehicles, including but not limited to mowers, mixers, and dirt removal equipment. Section 4, subsection 14.08.01, District R2 Contemporary Residential, paragraph C, conditional uses shall be amended by adding the following. Home occupation involving access by the general public. Section 5, subsection 14.08.01, District 3, R3 Multiple Family Residential, paragraph B shall be amended to read as follows. B, permitted uses. Following is a list of uses in R3 Multiple Family Residential District permitted by right. Community service center, dwelling, single-family, dwelling, two-family, dwelling, multiple-family, education, public use, home occupation requiring no coming and going of the general public and no overnight street parking of construction trailers or other business-related vehicles, including but not limited to mowers, mixers, and dirt removal equipment. Section 6, subsection 14.08.01, District R3 Multiple Family Residential, paragraph C, conditional uses shall be amended by adding the following. Home occupation involving access by the general public. Section 7, subsection 14.08.03i, sentence 1 shall be amended to read as follows. Home occupations involving access by the general public. A business license shall be required for all new home occupations involving access by the general public. Section 8, subsection 14.08.01i3 shall be amended to read as follows. Three, one, unanimated, non-illuminated identification sign of up to two square feet in size may be displays, displayed flat against the wall or door of the residence. No other external evidence of the operation is allowed. Section 9, all provisions of the ordinances of Eureka Springs in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed, and all other provisions of the ordinances of Eureka Springs not in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. Section 10, severability clause. Should any sentence, paragraph, clause, phrase, or section of this ordinance be adjudged or held to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any part of provision thereof other than the part so decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional. decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional, and shall not affect the validity of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code as a whole.
James?
Move to approve ordinance number 2236 on its first reading.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Just one clarifying, is this the time for one clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
Steve, just to be sure I understand, in R1, right now, we have a rule, no more tourist logic, that's stopped. But they still give B&amp;B licenses in R1.
Yes.
So, does over on section 7 here, the sentence that says, "Home occupation involving access by the general public, a business license shall be required for all new home occupations involving access by the general public," does that still allow B&amp;Bs in R1? Is that the sentence that will cover that? Or have we somehow with this excluded the continuation of B&amp;Bs in R1?
That comes under R3.
R1 is what they have, the tourist.
No, but that's, that's under the heading of R3, R3 Multiple Family.
You're talking about section 7?
Yeah, I was talking about 7, because.
Oh, okay, that's, yeah, that is, that is 7.
So that allows, that would allow B&amp;Bs to continue in R1?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all, I was just checking there.
And, well, yeah, it would.
Thank you.
And answer your question.
Any further, any additional questions? And all those in favor of approving ordinance 2236 on its first reading, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Now, our next ordinance is for screening of building materials at home occupations.
And this is the single page, and it's item 2 on your handouts, I think, is that correct?
Single page.
And it's actually, it's, it's a home occupation that is by a business contractor-held license, which does, does not mean the building contractor uses his home for his business. It's a different, that's a different kettle of fish. So does that kind of make sense? So basically, all we were thinking in this, it's just more of a concern for protecting residential neighborhoods. If a business contractor is using their home and their business license is issued to that address, then they, if they use the home as the staging area or supply place for their business, they basically just have to screen their business-related materials from the rest of the neighborhood. It's kind of what, it's sort of a good neighbor policy. But we don't have anything like that at this point in our code.
And it is, as I recall, that Clean City Ordinance, which is the name of it that we passed, also had some verbiage in there about materials and everything, and so this seems, as I recall, to dovetail into that and be complimentary. So there's no conflict.
There's no conflict, and this is, this is specifically concerning a license holder in yours. And the other, the other was just residences in general, I think, is that correct?
Right, yeah, but what's neat about it is that there's no conflict.
They work together, yes.
James?
Move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ordinance number will be 2237, an ordinance amending Title 11.08.04, the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to Clarify Storage at Home Occupation Building Contractor Businesses. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs desires to better codify its regulation of site pollution within the city, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, that subsection 11.08.04, the Municipal Code, be amended as follows. Section 1, subsection 11.08.04 shall be added. 11.08.04, all home occupation of building contractor businesses located in R1, R2, and R3 residential zones must screen from all public views, all business and/or construction-related materials, including but not limited to supplies, equipment, tools, and waste products. Section 2, all provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed, and all other provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs not in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance shall remain full force and effect. Section 3, severability clause. Should any sentence, paragraph, clause, phrase, or section of this ordinance be adjudged or held to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any part or provision thereof, other than the parts so decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional, and shall not affect the validity of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code as a whole.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve ordinance number 2237 on its first reading.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Ms. Weaver, did you have a chance to look over both these ordinances?
I have seen them. I think there's a couple of things that may need to be.
Tweaked?
Tweaked.
Okay.
But I'll actually talk to you about that if I can in the next day or so.
Okay. Have you got copies of these?
I do.
Okay. Moving on to, need a resolution, resolution for approval of the 2016 budget.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay.
Now you're ready for the one to sign it a number?
We're gonna have to read.
Move through this quick.
We have to read all of this?
No, no, we just can read the top page.
Okay, thank you.
I would move to assign this resolution a number and to read it for passage.
Second.
We have a discussion? No discussion? Okay, all those in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved.
In the press, have we not done resolutions for passage by roll call?
Should be done by roll call, yes.
All right, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
The resolution number will be 674. A resolution providing for adopting budgets for the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016, appropriating money for each and every item of the budget therein provided for. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive study and review of the proposed budgets, and whereas, in the opinion of the City Council, the proposed 2016 budget presents as accurately as possible the city's anticipated revenues and expenditures for the 2016 calendar year. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, this resolution shall be known as the Budget Resolution for the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016, and the attached budget documents reflect estimated revenues and expenditures in detail for the period. All revenues and appropriations are based on estimated revenues, and all estimates are subject to change during the budgetary period. Section 2, the amounts for revenues and expenditures proposed in the 2016 municipal budget are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purposes set forth in the calendar year ending December 31, 2016. Estimated revenues for the general fund: $3,198,711. Appropriations for the general fund: $3,192,864. Estimated revenues for the street fund: $747,100. Appropriations for the street fund: $737,215. Estimated revenues for LOPF: $275,300. And appropriations for LOPF: $273,181. Estimated revenues for the capital fund: $952,334. Appropriations for the capital fund: $472,825. Estimated revenues for the debt service: $1,304,950. Appropriations for debt service: $1,266,138. Estimated revenues for court automation: $6,235. Appropriations for that court automation: $4,000. Estimated revenues for the fireman's pension fund: $108,351. And appropriations for the fireman's pension fund: $83,000. Estimated revenues for municipal court retirement: $1,080. Appropriations: $1,080. Estimated revenues for the water and sewer fund: $1,420,000. Appropriation for the water and sewer fund: $1,414,966. Estimated revenues for the transit fund: $1,294,968. Appropriations for the transit fund: $1,219,150.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have one question, and I know we discussed all this last Monday in the workshop, but can somebody here just refresh my memory on the, on the capital fund?
No, not me, I have a second question.
Yeah, 'cause I thought that it was all, I mean, it's, it's in reserves.
Correct. What you're talking about, it's the capital funds that turn into.
Yeah, and we're gonna only use the less than 500,000 of it. Is that, I mean.
I don't remember 500,000. And I thought it wasn't estimated revenue because it's a reserve fund, so it, when it reads this way, it looks like there's revenue coming into it, but that's reserved revenue, it's not, it's money that was like in savings. And then the capital fund, it says appropriation, 472. And where did 472 come from? Because I thought we had pared the thing down, almost nothing in capital. Is that part of the money that's coming in, in, with refinancing the police department or something to build the?
Part of that, it's part of the paying off the bond issues.
It's, that's what's rolled into there, thank, okay, then I'm, now I'm tracking. It's just hard to see the capital fund as a revenue account, but, you know, obviously if the state passes it that way, it's still confusing.
Yeah, that's what, that's what that.
I figured it had to be, there was only one term.
All right, anything else? All right, we got TV agenda?
Move to discuss. Harris.
Oh, your second.
Okay, this has been an ongoing problem for a really long time, like probably since we got our TV city site. We've got to do something about either appointing someone to keep it updated, hiring someone, getting a volunteer, somebody's got to do something. We have stuff showing on our city site on TV from November 3rd, okay? This is pathetic and ridiculous. And when somebody who is here visiting flips on our TV station to see what's going on in our town, what we're doing, what's coming up, the events, and they see crap from six months before, this is dumb. It's not that hard to keep it updated. I don't care if somebody looks at it every Monday or something like that. The Holiday Island section is really bad, but they're not the only spot. But somebody has got to sit there and just go through all of it and update it when an event is over and get it off.
Mr. McClung?
I think that just falls under your purview, and I think you can take care of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't care.
It bugs me, it bugs me too, Mickey, so, yeah, I mean, that's something, I haven't seen the thing lately, but that's something I had talked to him about, and I thought we had it taken care of. A lot of it too is, it stays up there and nobody pays any attention that it's an event that's, you know, and then we don't get any updates from people either, and so it's something I'll just tell.
Well, there's, somebody's gonna have to sit there, pick a specific day, like every Monday morning, or every Sunday night or something.
We'll get it taken care of.
And go through, because this, oh man, I mean, this is so bad for our visitors.
But in defense of that, when you look at all the different things, the CAPC site, the chamber site, we have calendars going everywhere around this town of events.
That's trying to be remedy, too.
And that, thank you, because that gets very confusing. It would be nice to have one real calendar that's accurate.
As Mr. McClung said, that's why, we recognize that as a problem, and so we're trying to work within the, actually, the mayor's economic development areas is one of the things we want to do, is for one place where everybody can go and look at and see what's happening. So various merchants and, or people can look and see what's going on with that weekend. But again, the problem, one of the problems is getting information from people to put it on, and.
If they don't, and it's one site, then what, then that's their loss. But at least we, guests and everything, you know, we can funnel them to one place to look.
That's what we're trying to do.
And/or it's neat to attach it to your website under the calendar of events on your website, so like if they come up for my bed and breakfast, it links right to the.
I think we're actually trying to work everything through, the CAPC.
Okay.
As the coordinator, and then from there, it gets dispersed out to the other calendars.
Well, sometimes the TV station thing, it gets looked at, because, you know, they get in their room, they check out the TV to see what we have going on this weekend, and they see.
Yeah, I understand.
A parade from.
We'll see, we'll see if we can get it taken care of. So, agenda setting? Bob?
Nope.
Mr. McClung?
Zero.
Mr. DeVito?
I'll just keep the trend going, no.
Mickey?
We did fine.
Joyce?
Well, is it, is it out of order to discuss this Western District?
Yes, it is. Because it may still be under, under appeals and everything else.
Oh, okay, because otherwise, we would be putting the carriage franchises back on the agenda. That's why I asked this. We haven't, we haven't approved those other franchises yet.
No, no, we don't know what's gonna happen there, so we really shouldn't discuss it.
Okay, well, why don't I wish, explain this to me after the meeting, then, what this means.
City Council comments? I'll go back around to Bob again. Start with Bob. Mr. McClung?
Nah.
James?
Well, it seems like the season just keeps getting earlier and earlier, but the weather's scheduled for 65 degrees in Mardi Gras on that weekend, looks like we're gonna have a big weekend for the city, and that's a good thing for this time of year.
I want to compliment the mayor on the state-of-the-city review and hitting the highlights, and also looking forward into 2016 for the, for the projects. I think it was a clear, concise message for the citizens of this town to see that things they've been discussing for a long time have not been forgotten, that there is a plan for it, there is action moving towards it, and it's, it's not being forgotten. And I think that's real important. And you hit it concisely and to the point, and it's nice to be able to sit on the City Council with civility and proactive work being done.
Mickey?
I want to say happy birthday to my three-year-old granddaughter and my, help us all, 17-year-old Californian granddaughter. She's worse than a regular teenager. I love you, sweetie. Happy birthday, girls.
Joyce?
No, I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay. Well, we have, I think I've already spoken my comments, so there's, there's not much I can, can go on to there. But upcoming events, as James had mentioned, we've got events coming up. One of the things I'd like for the council to go to, and I'd mentioned during the state of the city address, about the Parks Commission and spending their money. If you remember, part of their money was to go and repair storage space for the Christmas If you remember, part of their money was to go and repair storage space for the Christmas decorations. Out of, I think they had budgeted 6,000, I think they only spent 4,000 on there. And tomorrow is an open house, and everybody is invited to go down from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Eureka Parks and check it out and see how they've got it organized and fixed up. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised in how they can actually find stuff. I think we'll be able, next year, we'll know where we're at, so, yeah. January 30th begins our Eureka Gra Night Parade at 6:00 PM. Going to, of course, start out at Rowdy Beaver, continue over to the library and down Spring Street, and that should be very entertaining and a lot of fun. It's one of our more decorative parades and more exciting parades I think the city has. And then on the 4th, February the 4th, is the Joker Masquerade Ball at 6:00 PM up the end of the Ozarks. And that's a great fun event, too. A lot of activity and a lot of fun there. And then on February the 6th is the Eureka Gra Day Parade at 2:00, and again, it starts at the Rowdy Beaver and goes to the library and comes down Spring Street. And then that night will be the mayor's ball at 7:00 at the Basin Park Hotel, and I understand that's going to be quite an event, too. So, if y'all haven't gotten your tickets, there's still tickets available. And last year was a lot of fun, and they've got a great band playing, and they've got a great activity scheduled for that. And then, of course, we got our city council meeting the 8th of February. So, is there anything activities I've forgotten? Even though this is early, we've got a lot going on, so, like James says, with the weather out there, I think we should have, I see, I've been seeing people out walking the streets today, so, you know, I'm real excited about it. If nothing else, here, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Okay, Tim, what does this mean here, then?